Good evening, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District. First item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have anyone wishing to address the council at this time? All right, seeing no one, we do have closed session items and I'll turn over to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor McCochran. We have three closed session items. The first one is for real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 5495-6.8. The parcel numbers are all listed on the agenda as well as the negotiating parcel -- sorry, negotiating parties. These are the properties immediately authent adjacent to Air Force Base. The second item is public employment pursuant to Government Code 5495-7 and the title to be discussed is Deputy City Manager. And the third is existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 5495-6.9A and the litigation of City of Victorville versus Porter et al., case number is CIV-13956. If there's any reportable action, we will report that at the conclusion of the closed session or prior to commencement of the regular session at 7:00.
Okay, we'll now move into closed session. Good evening, I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District. At this time, we will have our invocation which will be led by Dr. James Markham, pastor of Emmanuel Temple Church, and the Pledge of Allegiance by our Police Chief, Don Yoder.
If we could bow in prayer. Dear Lord, we praise your holy name. We thank you for this opportunity to come and pray for our leaders and for our city. Your holy word says, "I exhort you therefore, that first of all supplication, prayers, intercessions, and giving of thanks be made for all men, for kings and for all those that are in authority, that we may lead a quiet and peaceful life in all godliness and honesty." Dear Lord, we ask that you will bless our mayor and our city council. Bless them with health and strength and long life. Bless their spouses, bless their children, bless all of their family members. Whatever their concerns are tonight, we pray your favor upon them, that you will bless them with godly wisdom, knowledge, understanding, counsel, and might and affection, Lord. Please lead them, O Lord, in a plain path. You say in your word, "The Lord is thy keeper; the Lord is thy shepherd on thy right hand." So, Lord, please protect and guide and heal our city council all the days of their lives. And, Lord, we're not ashamed to say that we love them and we respect them and we care for them. And as you dress them, Lord, please bless our city, our police department, our fire department, our schools, our businesses, our churches, and all that concerns us that concerns you. Dear Lord, you say in your word, "That every soul be subject unto the higher powers; for there is no power but of God. The powers that be are ordained of God." So with those words, we can say wholeheartedly that we love our mayor, we love our mayor Protem, we love our city council, we love our leaders, and we do want you to bless them. As we come to a conclusion, O Lord, we pray for the peace of Jerusalem, we pray for Israel, we pray for everyone, we pray for one another. We say, "The Lord bless thee and keep thee. The Lord make his face shine upon thee; the Lord be gracious unto thee. The Lord lift up his countenance upon thee; the Lord give thee peace. And they shall put my name upon the children of Israel, Victorville, and I will bless them." May the Lord bless you all, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I am the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty just as for all.
At this time, I'll have our city attorney make any announcements out of closed session.
Thank you, Mayor McCochran. We had three closed session items, all of which are fully set forth on the agenda and there was no reportable action with respect to those items.
All right, with that, I'll have the presentation of the agenda to the City Council by our city clerk.
The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. It is requested that all present please silence cellphones, pagers, and other electronic devices, and that personal conversations be kept to a minimum during the conduct of the meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item which appears on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards that have been placed on the agenda table in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk for the record prior to consideration of the item. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card when the item comes up for discussion by the city council. The public comment period is the time and place for the general public to address the city council on any item within their jurisdiction that is not on the agenda. It is requested that a speaker card also be submitted to the city clerk for anyone who wishes to address the city council during the public comment period. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor, depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak. All communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Individuals who fail to adhere to these guidelines may be asked to yield the floor. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Disruptive conduct includes, but is not limited to, addressing the council without being recognized, not addressing the subject before the council, repetitiously addressing the same subject, failing to relinquish the podium when requested to do so, verbal outbursts or comments from the audience. Thank you for your cooperation and adherence to these rules. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the city council. And tonight, there are no revisions to the council agenda, and that is all I have, Mayor McCochran.
All right, thank you. We'll go ahead and move into public comment. The first card I have is April Pinkston.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. I was just wanting to express some concern about the idea of renting hangar space so that the supertankers can have free rent. I have a problem with that because I understand that the city needs -- pardon me, that the city needs money, and if I owned property and I knew that the tenant wanted to leave because I was charging too much, I would want to negotiate for a fair price, but not just say, "Okay, well, you can have it for free." Because, you know, that hangar is valuable and it's going to take, you know, utilities to keep it up going and everything like that, so I would hope that you would rethink that. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Art Figueroa.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a couple of pictures here. I know I'm running out of time, and I wonder if I could just maybe give it to somebody for you guys to look at, for you guys to look at right now.
You could hand it to our city clerk.
I was here approximately two and a half years ago with a kind of a problem that's kind of been ongoing. It's subsided a little bit, but on my cul-de-sac, it's in the Brentwood area, and the cul-de-sac dead ends up against the Paseo, which is a real nice Paseo that goes over to Brentwood Park. Well, back then, a couple of years ago, I addressed you with the problem of crime and our neighbors all being broken into. Part of the problem was this opening in this Paseo, the gate opening, where the -- we see a lot of riffraff walking through up and down the street and they go through the Paseo. This opening is kind of unique as far as the other openings all along the Paseo in that it's covered with vegetation, it has steps that go down to it, and anybody that can hang out there, and a lot of people do, they can hide, and at night, they're there. And back then, the neighbor that lives right next to it was broken into twice. The retired people next door to him, they were broken into. We've had the sheriff's department numerous times coming up and down the street. There was some confrontation about last week with several, maybe even half a dozen people in at the sale here on it, us over in the cul-de-sac. What I asked back then was if this opening could be closed off and would eliminate all the people walking through, and it actually would eliminate when sheriffs, when they do come and they try and talk to these kids, they can run into this Paseo and disappear, and they're gone, and they can't be caught. And the last time I asked you guys, I was kind of directed to the planning department, and they told me that I'd have to send out some information to all the people in the neighborhood, let them know what's going on. All in all, it's going to cost about $1,500 to do this, and it's not my property, it's -- I think it's city property, I'm not sure. So, anyway, the past couple of summers, the problem sort of subsided, but now it's starting up again, and we've seen a lot of more people going through. I said last week, my neighbor got his lights broken into his house, and he's retired, he can't, he doesn't even know it until the next morning that there's been problems. So, to hopefully avoid anything else going on, I'm here to ask you again if there's anything that we can do. And one of the pictures there, I show, it shows the opening, how it steps down, these kids can stand on the Paseo, and at street level, they can look and they can scout on all the houses without us even seeing that they're even down there, even in the daytime. So, if my neighbor was going to come, he had a previous engagement, he was going to try and come to give his portion, because he lives right next to it, and he's had more problems than I have. He'll probably be here maybe two weeks from now. So, if there's anything you guys can help us out with to close it off. The other picture is another part of the Paseo where the opening is closed off, so it's not like, they all have to be open. So, and in my closing statement, I'd just like to say if maybe you can take the safety of us over the convenience of a few that walk through there. I know, I used to walk my dog through there, I can go around, but I think safety's more important than just someone being able to just walk through there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Corinne Crawford.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm just here to say that we heard that the Doris Davies Pool was going to be shut down next year, and I come from Phelan to swim there every day, every summer, and I think it would be a travesty to have it closed down. Many deaths are caused by drowning, and I think the children and everybody in general needs to have someplace to cool off in the summer, and I understand it's an expense, but we pay, we come all the way from Phelan, Wrightwood, just to swim in this pool, and I would like you to reconsider this. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie Latham.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Carrie Latham, I live in Wrightwood. I'm a retired city employee that was injured on the job and retired from my city. Swimming is one of the only type of exercises that I am able to do, and I also travel five days a week from Wrightwood. We carpools, several of us, to come over and use the Doris Davies Pool at Pebble Beach, I'm not sure exactly what you guys call it now. Drowning is the second, only behind car accidents, in death for children under 12 years old. So, learning to swim and the opportunity that's afforded to the kids in the City of Victorville by keeping that pool open, I think are just, it just has to stay open. I would beg you guys to reconsider, look into your budget, see if there's somewhere else maybe that you can find to trim the budget so you can keep that pool open. There are no other pools in the City of Victorville for our kids in this community to learn how to swim, and not only does that pool service children in Victorville, but there are people coming from Oak Hills, Pinion Hills, Phelan, and even from Wrightwood to come and use that pool. So, just keep in mind, like I said, the number two cause of death for children under 12 years old is drowning, and the service that your Parks and Rec provides by teaching kids to swim and everything, if it makes a difference for one life, I would say please try and keep that pool open if there's any way possible. Thank you.
Raymond Herrera.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, City Council. My name's Raymond Herrera, president and founder of We the People, Californius Crusader. And to the people of Victorville, go to my website, californiuscrusader.com. Mayor, I'm here to speak to you about your lawsuit with EB5. Before I do, you know, they're speaking of a swimming pool that's going to close down, and I'd just like to point out to the City of Victorville that this city council, with the exception of Miss Valias, voted to sue the federal government on a failed policy program that you put forward. There's a criteria to buy all that money. You didn't meet the criteria. You had your city attorney spend $7,500. You have women coming up here talking about keeping a swimming pool open. You spent $80,000 on the Hispanic High Press at Chamber of Commerce in the last four or five years. You spent more money on that with other Hispanic issues. I would think that, Mayor, that you should sit down with the city council, not behind closed doors like you have the habit of doing, and trying to formulate a plan that would bring more money to you, to your city, as opposed to suing the federal government. $7,500, how much more are you going to spend to even, you know, work that lawsuit? Hundreds of thousands of dollars that you're going to lose for this city. Why? Because you're like a little kid who didn't get his football. You don't deserve it. EB5 sells American citizenship to wealthy people of other countries. It gives them the right to bring in 200 of their relatives to displace Americans in all sectors of our society. I hope they replace you and Rudy and Kennedy and your city attorney at Rothschild. I hope they replace your grandchildren. But the question of the thing is, you don't throw bad money after bad money. You lost. Dr. Pepper, the one bottling company here, let them pay for it, Mayor. Don't use our tax dollars to do that. Don't be foolish. You think you're going to sue the federal government, and when? What kind of city attorney do you have, and what do you even give me that advice to go forward with it? Bad money should be better spent somewhere else. Furthermore, Mayor, I'm working on your circumventing freedom of speech in this chamber, and believe me, I'm making headway. They're appalled, the higher-ups, that you would even have an agenda like you do to people from addressing Rudy or addressing your Rothschild or whatever. It's not American, Mayor. I can address anybody, the body politic, it's in the Constitution, and you cannot take that away, but it's going to come down to bear on you soon. For the city clerk, two weeks ago, I made a promise, you're looking at the clock, huh? I made a promise to deliver some papers, a bit hectic two weeks, believe me, because I work on a national basis, but it will be delivered within the next two days, and should you not forward the information, should you, you know, snowball any information you don't want, there's people watching you, and they got authority. God bless you, Mayor.
God bless you. By the way, I'd like to compliment you. I read a lot about you in the paper on Sunday. It's nice to know about people that attack me at every single meeting, so it's good to have some knowledge of your background. But anyway, we'll go on to Robin Vizden. No, no, you're done. Robin, you're up. I was complimenting you.
My name's Robin Vizden. I'm also with We the People, Californius Crusader, and I just wanted to talk about one specific issue. The meeting before last, Felix Diaz asked the body politic to contribute to his GI Forum mariachi celebration, and Mr. Herrera informed me, as well as I did research, the GI Forum sounds like a great organization, but it's actually a very racist organization for Latinos only. One of the things that they've been working on is to stop the Arizona immigration law. They are supporters of illegal immigration. I was appalled when I went to their website, GI Forum. But at any rate, Felix Diaz asked that you donate to his mariachi celebration for the Veterans Home in Barstow, and he mentioned at that time, as you have done in the past, so I contacted your city clerk, and she sent me the record, this body politic has given more than $6,000 for these yearly mariachi festivals. Then, in addition, Mayor Protem Rudy Cabralis is a member of the group. I don't think that's correct. That seems very similar to like what happened at the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. Why were the taxpayers $6,000, more than $6,000, spent on these mariachi yearly events? We're having citizens here wanting the pool to be kept open, other citizens complaining about unsafe areas. This is where our money should be going. And I'll be submitting the paperwork that shows how much money was spent, and in addition, Mayor Cabralis, Mayor Protem Cabralis has announced from the podium while I've been here, that Felix Diaz is his friend. Well, Felix Diaz is the commander of this GI Forum in San Bernardino that's taken some years, $1,000 for these mariachi celebrations. Mr. Herrera said, in his opinion, when they put those on, the old World War II veterans, the elderly in their wheelchairs and confined, he said he thinks they look like they're tortured by these events, and in his opinion, they should be putting on patriotic music and performances for the old folk, the old veterans at the Barstow home. And I would like to see in writing that you're not going to be giving a penny this year to the mariachi performance for Felix Diaz. Thank you.
Is in writing, it's in the budget. There is no money allocated to that. David Salinas.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm David Salinas, I'm the pastor at St. John Lutheran Church and on 1600, 1670 Green Tree Boulevard, and this is in regards to some damage that has been occurring on our property. A couple of years ago, American Housing had purchased the property adjacent to ours and were planning on putting up, I believe, condos, and they started digging a little gully for, I guess, the sewer lines, but the American Housing went out of business and the gully was left there. As a result, this past year, because of the weather, and the wet weather, it washed away a lot of our fencing, as you can see in the pictures there, and it's becoming a hazard both for our children, because we also have a playground where, on the inside of that fencing, so that's becoming more precarious for the kids, and as well as, it's becoming almost like a trash dump there, so we were requesting help from the city to perhaps help fill that gully and maybe repair our fencing, as well as clean up the area. And I'm not sure if this is the proper, you know, venue to present this, but...
No, I appreciate your comments, and we will definitely look into that and see if there's anything that can be done.
Okay, very good. How would I get in, would I get in contact with you?
Uh... We'll have our city engineer give you his card, and we'll go from there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Lisa Aquino.
Good evening, I'm Lisa Aquino. I too am here about the swimming pool issue. My big concern with Victorville, I've been here for probably about five years, very happy with the move that I made to Victorville, but my son has been going to the swimming pool every summer, he's been going to the kids' club activity there every summer, and my concern is what's happening to the city and where we're going if we're going to be shutting down some of the only services that are going to keep children entertained and productive and not have them go down the wrong path. We need to have structured activities for our children, for our youth, and I find that atrocious that we're going to be shutting down the only swimming pool that they have, that we have in our city. So, that is my great concern, if we could find someplace else to cut the budget. I pay for the kids' camp, I think the price for the kids' camp is good, I wouldn't mind paying more, I wouldn't mind paying more for the pool. So, do what you need to do to see that it stays open. That is my opinion as a taxpayer in this city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dorothy Knorr.
Yes, Mayor and Councilpeople, I'm here for about two or three reasons. Number one is, I read the paper and I get information that shouldn't even be out to the public until the buyers or whoever has notified everybody in the city. the public until the buyers or whoever has notified everybody in the city. Things are leaking out before you even go to closed session. So something has to stop, because we get all this information, and we don't know. We've lost how many deals because of that with the airport and the power, power two and all that? I mean, we don't need that leaking out until the deal is set in stone. We don't need things coming out and then it blows it for everybody, because the people that's buying it don't want their name out there yet. So that needs to stop. Another thing is, I'm going to go the same thing with the swimming pool and the park. Doris Davies had money put aside for many things, and I'm sure she's turning over her grave when you see them going to close the pool, got to do this and got to do that, because the money's not there. And that is not right. It is not right for the people in this city. But we've got to get things going in the right direction. Now, if that power plant fails, we're going to have some money. Otherwise, we're not going to have any money, because somebody lets it out to the paper before it should even be out. And it's got to stop. And you, Mr. Mayor, has got to take it upon yourself to see to it, it has stopped, until the deals are made, so we don't lose everything we've got in this city, because the city is about done for if we don't start taking care of it and getting on the ball. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I was just giving one last card. Adolfo Aquino.
Good evening, Mayor, city councils. My concern is about the swimming pool. I worked for 25 years as a social worker in Los Angeles County. I ended moving here in the high desert about eight years ago with my family. And I have seen a lot of stuff going on with families and kids. And having a swimming pool, the only swimming pool that everybody uses for their kids, I think is, it doesn't make no sense to close the only swimming pool we have for our kids. Giving a good chance for kids to do something productive is very essential for the development of a nice city, to be able to have the opportunity to kids to do something that are positively constructive is the key of success of any city. And if we take that swimming pool, the day camp, and we start cutting the only thing that can be productive to kids, what is left? You know, I mean, I think we should consider doing something else, you know, maybe increase the cost a little bit, 10, 15, 20 bucks, and cut the other, perhaps getting the money from someplace else, you know? But this is the only thing we have for the kids in our city. I mean, what is wrong? I mean, what is wrong right now with this decision that we're cutting the only thing we have for the kids? I mean, these are, you know, kids right now, they're having a difficult time. Our society has gone through so many changes since the '60s, the '70s, the '80s, the '90s. And we need to go back to values. We need to go back to the basics. We need to take care of our kids and our families. We cannot do this. We can't take the pool away from the kids. We can't close the basic thing that it makes so sense to be able to have a nice family growing, safe in a grand, in a nice, good city, you know? I mean, I came from, I love Victorville. I came eight years ago to live here in the high desert, and I love Victorville. I love the quietness. Of course, every time we have a good neighborhood, a new neighborhood, we have good people, we have some knuckleheads moving in, you know? But we need to take care of each other. We need to take care of all the good things we have. We need to grow. We can take away, we cannot take away the swimming pool from the kids. This is, doesn't make no sense. It's the only thing we have for the kids. My son learned how to swim in that pool, and he's been going there every year since then, you know, for the last five years. And I'm asking to you, Mayor, and the county councils, to consider this, you know, let's get the money from someplace else and keep the place going. Let's increase the cost a little bit, and I know it can be done. We can do it. We can do it together. Like I said, I'm willing to pay 20 bucks for the camp, 20 bucks more, you know, a week for the swimming pool, and let's keep it open. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on with the meeting, I know the attorney has advised the council appropriately not to comment on public comments, but I would like an opportunity to clarify two issues, if I could ask that. Number one is on the swimming pool. Just to clarify, the original budget that was proposed included a series of cuts, very, very deep cuts. That was proposed in, I believe it was in May, mid-May. And the reason why all those cuts were proposed was because that was based on our existing reserve policy. The council at that time gave direction to staff to forego that reserve policy, which freed up approximately $2 million to help offset some of those cuts. So this summer, the pool is not being cut. What the count, what the staff have rightfully advised the council of is that if revenues continue to drop, we may have no choice next year. Our intent is to do everything we can to try to keep that pool open. We know it is a resource, and no one on staff wants to cut it. If the dollars aren't there, we intend to come to the council at mid-year before we hire all the lifeguards and other swim staff to have a discussion about, is there another way? So as of right now, the pool is not being cut. I don't want anyone here thinking that it is. This swim season is safe, and staff is going to be working hard to keep it open for next year as well. But it is something that we have to consider if the dollars simply aren't there. So I wanted to reassure you. The other issue that Mrs. Miller brought up regarding the company QGen, although there wasn't information from the closed session leaked, their name does appear on the agenda. And I believe that is where the newspaper got the information to report. There was not closed session information leaked in any way that I'm aware of. I didn't see anything in the newspaper article that covered anything that we covered in closed session. It simply listed their name appropriately as the other negotiating party.
All right, thank you. We'll now move into the regular agenda. The Library Board of Trustees, there's no items at the time of posting. Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, there's no items at the time of posting. Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, we do have one agenda item, that is Agenda Item Number Seven. This is a presentation to request to ratify the approval of the sublease agreement and declaring the changes as non-substantiative for Building 681 Pratt Whitney Line Maintenance Services.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
For the Redevelopment Agency, there were no items at the time of posting. For the Joint Powers Financing Authority, there were no items at the time of posting. So now move into the Victorville Water District. We do have underwritten communications Agenda Item Number Eight, which is a companion to City Council Item Number Fourteen. This is a presentation of requests to approve the memorandum of understanding for the repair of the anaerobic reactors at the SCLA Industrial Wastewater Treatment Plant. Approval includes, one, a change order to AHERNs in the amount of $80,000 for the anaerobic reactor repairs, and, two, a change order to AHERNs in the amount of $7,027 for installation of the gas core holes.
McCaffrey, if I might, I'd like to just correct the record. The staff report indicates that the city attorney's office prepared the MOU. We did not prepare the MOU. And actually, we have a couple of minor comments, so any approval, I would like to have contingent upon additional changes as approved by the city manager and the city attorney.
Okay.
I have some questions.
Yes.
In reading the staff rec, it lists out a series of events that have occurred in this situation. Doug, who is, who is responsible for the project management?
Ultimately, it's our city engineer, Sean McGlade. And I would ask that he come up to address any questions that you might have on this. It's been an ongoing negotiation.
Good evening, Mayor, council.
From what I can understand, in, in the staff rec, it appears that there's a series of events that have taken place and failures on all three parts of the parties. One is, the designer designed it poorly, is that correct? There were some flaws in the design?
It was an installation problem.
Uh-huh. But the installer is saying that there were some design flaws? But the project manager didn't check to see if it was fitted properly in enough advanced time, according to the staff rec? That it was too late by the time it went on, online. Is that correct?
There was omissions of certain work associated with the installation. The contractor that installed the equipment claimed that the, there was insufficient instructions given by the manufacturer of the equipment.
Now, wouldn't it be the project manager's job to make sure that they coordinate, that they receive all the information prior to equipment going online, and that all parties are doing what they're supposed to be doing?
That's correct.
So basically, the taxpayers are going to have to pay for failure of our staff's performance, is that correct?
No. The construction management company that was hired by the city to manage the construction of the wastewater treatment plant is a party to the settlement, based upon that same argument that you made.
So what's the liability to the city?
Dollar-wise?
Yes.
As it says in the staff report, $32,676.
So if there's no fault to the city, why are we picking up the tab?
A portion of that, the city has evaluated that the legal cost to pursue a lawsuit with multiple parties would far exceed this amount. And that was something that was discussed in closed session several weeks ago.
You know, I'd just like to end my comments by saying that when reading the staff rec, it is a saga of errors that I think our staff should have caught. And I'm disappointed that they did not, and it's going to cost the taxpayers.
All right, we do have a motion and a second.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
Agenda Item Number Nine is a presentation of requests to approve payment of the property liability insurance invoice from Special District Risk Management Authority in the amount of $184,798.50.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
Moving on to the city council, public hearing, Agenda Item Number Ten. This is a public hearing called to hear arguments for or against the adoption of ordinance number 2275 to provide for a police service fee for multiple police responses at the same premises and rescinding ordinance number 1519. Staff has requested this item be continued to August 2, 2011. They're researching additional ordinances that might provide even more teeth to this. But since this is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing at this time. I do have one card. April.
Well, I would just like a little bit of clarification on this, and I'm, excuse me, I'm wondering if it states that when someone calls and files a complaint about the noise, that the city, in fact, is going to be the victim?
Well, the original ordinance that we were going to adopt would have mirrored Hesperius, which is the one you brought to our attention. I believe our chief of police, Kevin Yoder, is actually looking at a ordinance out of Newport Beach that would actually be stronger than that. So I think the answer to that is yes, but I would encourage you to get together with him just to answer that specific question. But it will be coming back before us, and you'll have the opportunity to comment on it at that point.
Okay. And the other question is, is there some way that I can get a copy of that ordinance?
Yes. He can provide that to you. I mean, it's a public document, but I'm sure it'd be easier to get it from him than Newport.
Okay. Well, and obviously, you know that I'm in favor of it.
Yes.
So thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. Anyone else wishing to address this on Agenda Item Number Ten? All right, seeing no one else, I'll go ahead and continue this item to our August 2, 2011 meeting. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Eleven. This is a public hearing called to hear arguments for or against adoption of Resolution Number 11-036 entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of City of Victorville Confirming Annual Assessments for the Maintenance of Street Lighting in the City Wide Street Lighting Assessment District Number Two for the Fiscal Year 2001-2012." This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing on Agenda Item Number Eleven. Anyone wishing to address the council at this time? All right, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and return to the council for a decision.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number Twelve is the Consent Calendar.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protem Cabralis. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number Thirteen is a presentation by Billy Casper Golf Representatives Concerning the Status of the Contractual Operation of the Green Tree Golf Course. Doug?
Yeah, I see Chris Jones on his way down here to give the presentation at, I think it was the last council meeting. Councilmember Kennedy requested, and the council concurred, to get a little bit of a comfort level with the miracles that Billy Casper Golf is performing at Green Tree Golf Course. Chris, I'll just turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, council, mayor. Very excited about being here tonight to tell you about first-year recap at Green Tree and West Winds Golf Courses. I prepared a PowerPoint slide, which we'll flip through here. A little bit about Billy Casper Golf and our history. We are, we were founded in 1989 by Peter Hill and Bob Morris, and the home office, Vienna Support Center, is based in Vienna, Virginia. We have a little over...
Can you pull our microphone up a little something here, Mayor?
Yes, sir. We have a little over 6,000 employees, company-wide, 3.7 million rounds of golf, 101.5 million unique contactable golfers via email or direct mail pieces, and we are municipal experts. Little map here of the locations that we have. Currently, we are at 121 courses, company-wide, and of that, we have 71 municipality partnerships. The red dots on the map here represent our regional support offices. I am the Southwest Regional Manager, and I'm based out of Palm Springs. And tonight, we have Mike Sharp, our Regional Vice President. He's new to the company, and he is based out of Sacramento, California. And on the ground, our team, Tony Chavez is our Property General Manager, and Jimmy Hall is our Golf Course Superintendent. So those are the guys out there leading the charge on the day-to-day. This is just kind of our organizational structure, how we operate. I am the Regional Manager. We also have a Director of Maintenance. He's based out of Sacramento, as well as, our Vice President of Marketing is actually based out of Sacramento as well. Senior Accountant is at the Vienna Support Center. Each property has a specific accountant that we deal with that is familiar with the property. And these are the services that we provide at the Support Center. Payroll, human resources, benefits, accounting, accounts payable, IT, point-of-sale, marketing communications, and PR. We have a separate firm that is based out of the Support Center, Buffalo Communications, that handles the media inquiries for us. At any time, if you have any questions, just let me know. Just about our... Just about our values, revenue growth, operation, price value proposition, marketing and technology, rightsizing and expenses to get to the bottom line. And ownership mentality, we manage every property like we own it, like what we would do if it was our money. And then our focus on the guest experience and our ACE training. This is something that, you know, I really think set us apart as far as our database in the inland empire, over twenty-five thousand contactable golfers, six thousand, and actually looked it up last night, it's actually eighty-two hundred currently in the Victorville market. So that's the market share, we're definitely growing there, so that's very positive. The, one of the major successes from this past year was our Advantage Card sales. We maintained the membership base of the annual passes to the same level they were while growing the Advantage Card sales to over twenty-five hundred. Of that, over two thousand were sold at Green Tree and five hundred at West Winds. The point-of-sale system that we installed when we came in is Easy Links. And it allows you to tell everything about your golfer. When was the last time they played, how many times they played, their spending patterns, what time of day they play. It really shows us what our customer's doing and it enables us to go after them and get them to come back and play our facility. We can track how many people are playing more than five rounds, ten rounds. It's, the results are, I'm looking forward to being able to put Green Tree on this graph next year. Local market knowledge, we've been operating Ashwood Golf Course for over six years now and we've managed to improve bottom line results over a million dollars. ACE is just about providing great customer service. It's not just, it's not a hook, it's our culture, it's what we believe in, taking care of the guest. And it's everything that the guest encounters when they're at the golf course. We have, we hire an independent company to come out and kind of grade us on how we're performing on customer service. And these are, these customer service experts come out and rank us on everything that they encounter at the facility, if it's cleanliness, course facilities, service levels, whether or not you're upselling, providing a great golf experience. And I'm happy to report that the Victorville scores were very good this year. We also solicit feedback from the guests via email as well as an eight-hundred number. And it's one of my roles is to return a lot of phone calls from guests. And the majority of them at Green Tree and West Winds this year were phenomenal. So the feedback is really good. One of the things I talked about earlier was being able to contact our golfers, sending them, not just generic email communications, but to go after them and contact them and send them a relevant message. If Mr. Cabiaras came out and played Green Tree three months ago and you haven't been back, we'll probably send you something that says, "We missed those long drives together and we hope to see you soon." And it's amazing, the open rate on those is over ninety percent and the return rate's over seventy. Just something simple as that, knowing who your guests are and their trends. Gender inclusion is something that we're really focusing on this year. Women in golf programs, junior golf, player development programs, growing more golfers. That's gonna be the key to our success. So that's something that we're really working on. Tony Chavez has been starting up the women in golf program, and I believe we have twenty signed up already. And the second one, I believe, is next month. So that's something that we're working on. Before and after pictures tells a very good story. This is the tenth hole, ninth hole. And it's, you can really see the difference. Same thing around the greens, all the stuff that we talked about in the initial presentation during the interview process. It's good to see the before and after pictures there. And I'm sure there's a lot of questions about these. This is, this is the, your actuals from two thousand and seven through two thousand and nine, as well as where we are gonna finish this year. Don't have financial finals yet, I have a draft. So this is about ninety-eight percent certain where we're gonna finish this year along with the two thousand and eleven proposed budget. Revenue projections, and I'll go into it in the next slide, but this is with Green Tree only and with assuming the responsibility of the restaurant. Expense management, this is about rightsizing expenses. One of the things that the city staff has been creating with us, helped us secure a better rate on water going forward, so this is a big help. But where we're gonna finish this year, this includes both golf courses. Two thousand and ten includes both golf courses and then you see the drop with operating just the one. The differences from the initial pro forma, having an experience on the property, knowing the facility, what the bills are, what we can do and what we have done, improved golf course conditions, I think that's evident, and the feedback that we've gotten from the guests, rightsizing labor and expenses, the water savings as I spoke of earlier, additional inventory from the closure of West Winds. We're already seeing in June, since the closure, we were up over twelve hundred rounds at Green Tree. And we're projected to finish up fourteen hundred in July. I'll keep Doug off me for one more month. Continue to improve the programming, growing upon the player card sales with the twenty-five hundred is phenomenal results for the first year. Our goal the first year was seven fifty, both courses combined, so we feel really good about that. The upside in the food and beverage revenue, focus on the day-to-day business, lunch business, some dinner, it's such a great location, great spot in the heart of town, phenomenal facility. Tournament and event business, I know that it was, we met with the concessionaire earlier today and they had twenty weddings this past year. So that's very encouraging for us. Packaging and bundling food and golf, a simple move as putting chips and sodas and beer in the golf shop could be a forty thousand dollar swing, just having coolers in the golf shop and having it available. New golf cart fleet, thank you very much for approving that. The results in the last ninety days, we beat plan by over twenty-four hundred rounds in the final ninety days. And the great success after seeing a draft of Green Tree Financials, we missed plan by just under thirty thousand at Green Tree this year. So we're very encouraged by that. Programs that we've got on the horizon, Get Golf Ready, Golf for Women, the Executive Women Golfers Association is a national partnership that we have. It allows, I believe there is ten thousand members in Southern California, a lot of travelers, great opportunity to increase business. Kids Play Free Promotion, trying to get youth out on the golf course, kids will play free with a paying adult. Night Golf Events, creating inventory after hour when you normally wouldn't bring in any revenue. Nine and Dines, packaging with food and beverage, Family Golf Month, which are national programs. At this time, does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, it looks from the graph that you have reduced expenses from about two and a half million to about a million and a half in the last two years. So you've been able to pull expenses down by a million dollars.
Yes.
And our loss for years had been running about a million dollars. How were you able to do that? Was that mostly labor, water?
Yes, actually, water, you didn't pay for water. That wasn't included, you never paid for water prior to that. So that was something that was new this year, but then, like I said, we negotiated a new deal on that. Labor and the West Winds, the, what it costs to operate West Winds. We missed plan at Green Tree this year by under thirty thousand dollars and West Winds by over a hundred and eighty thousand. So it's just the lack of revenue at West Winds really hurt us.
And you expect to see a revenue increase at Green Tree this year?
Yeah, all of our trends are up and we're seeing that the West Wind golfer is coming over and playing Green Tree. West Winds was doing about twelve hundred rounds a month once the weather turned, and now we're seeing an additional twelve, thirteen, fourteen hundred rounds at Green Tree. So that, along with the golf cart fleet, it's, they're coming out and playing Green Tree now, so we're very excited about that.
There was a blog comment in the Daily Press a few weeks ago by someone who obviously didn't understand about golf carts, but commented how foolish it was for us to spend three hundred thousand dollars on golf carts. But what he obviously didn't understand is that somebody rents that golf cart every single day. What are our golf cart revenues? Can you give a rough idea of what those are in a year's time?
Sure, sure. The golf cart revenue's about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year.
A year?
Yes.
And that contract is a three-year contract?
We actually signed a four-year lease.
Four-year?
So it's basically a sixty-three thousand dollar a month, sixty-three thousand dollar a year cost, which is built into the budget.
Sixty-three in cost?
Sixty-three thousand a year, yes.
And we generate three hundred thousand a year?
Correct.
Not a bad deal, isn't it?
No, no, not at all.
Councilmember Kennedy, that was not a purchase, it was actually a lease and that lease is built into the budgets that Chris and the gang are putting together. There was no outlay of cash, in fact, we actually got a credit for our old golf carts that we turned in, but there was no immediate outlay of cash.
The net result for the fiscal year two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven was actually about a twenty-two thousand dollar credit.
And you understand that we have a pool we want to keep open? And if Billy Casper comes back and asks for a subsidy, we're gonna have to explain it. Are you confident you're not gonna need that subsidy?
Absolutely, I am, yes, I am confident. We feel great about the direction that Victorville's heading. And, you know, the city staff and everyone we work with has just been great. And the partnership with the City of Victorville is very important to us.
Are you gonna flip the nine holes?
We are talking about that, that's, probably not this year, there's a cost associated with that. Doug has not given me any more money this year, so he's made that very clear.
And last question is the driving range, any thoughts?
Yes, as far as this year, no. No, we've projected out, you know, it's, the cost, a hundred thousand dollars is a rough estimate.
Where would you do it?
The driving range, the plan that we talked about was shortening up seventeen and, seventeen and eighteen, making it a par three and a par four. I'm sorry, seventeen, shortening that up and then making eighteen the driving range. There's actually a spot where it was kind of, in initial plans down the road to build a driving range, but we believe right there by the clubhouse would just be a great opportunity.
You're gonna have to net the whole thing, topsides?
We're looking at all options. Yeah, obviously, you know, safety of the homeowners and the hotel guests is a priority.
I'd make a couple of observations. I know we went through a great deal of consternation many years ago and bringing the golf course back into play, it cost us quite a bit of money over a period of years, but we bought it into somewhat of an acceptable municipal golf course. Most cities have seen golf course, even though a small percentage of these citizens do play golf in itself, that the value of having a golf course certainly embedded in the city was incredible for our growth and development. But we, the comment that was given to me constantly was that you will never make a municipal golf course break even. They just, I mean, country clubs, yes, but not municipal golf courses. And I said, "Well, we," at the time I was suggesting we were losing about a million to a million and a half a year. I said, "Not losing so much as we've been spending that out of our general fund." He says, "Well, then you're doing pretty good. Most municipal cities put that kind of money into their golf courses." This financial crisis forced us to make a new look at how we do business out there. And it wasn't an easy decision, but we made the transition. And I've been on this council twenty-four years, I live on the golf course, I play at it, I certainly don't play golf in any sense of reality, but I'm very impressed with what you've done. I looked with it with a little bit of an eye and I went, "Okay, we've made the decision, now let's see how things go." In the year that I've seen so far, you've done an excellent job. Your program and where you're looking and where you're pointing to is incredible. We're almost at a break-even point right here as we speak. That's something that most everybody else has said isn't gonna happen in your city, and yet you've brought it to that point. So I compliment you and I think we've made the right decision, definitely so, to keep a very valuable asset in play and cut down on the taxpayers doing it. So again, I compliment you, sir.
Thank you very much.
I've got another question. What are you, what do you realistically project for going out five years, ten years as far as profitability?
The, our pro forma next year, the subsidy amounts on twenty-two thousand dollars. Year three, we have even positive cash flow. So down the road, it's, year six is two hundred thousand, I believe.
And have we incentivized you to generate those profits?
Yes, sir, it's built into the contract.
You think that's real?
And I've got an entire team in Vienna, Virginia letting me know that every day.
And you think those are realistic?
Absolutely. Yeah, the, what we're seeing and the increased rounds growth, you know, the additional inventory from West Winds, West Winds was about twelve thousand rounds this year in nine months. So if we pick up half of that, we are golden. So we're very excited about the future of Green Tree Golf Course.
Councilmember Kennedy, the contract that they had proposed had a ten percent incentive clause that when we get to a profitability standpoint, they would get ten percent. The council at the time actually voted to bump that to twenty percent in order to incent them to get there as quickly as possible.
And food and beverage, the restaurant will remain open?
Yes, yes, we actually, Mike Sharp and I met with the concessionaire this afternoon and she's working great with us into the transition and partnering with us and helping us. So we feel very, we're excited about the restaurant. But it's a phenomenal facility, you know, to your point, Mr. Rothschild, the upside, most municipalities don't have that facility and that location, right in the heart of town, right off the freeway, I mean, it's-
In the holiday season, they host a number of events, there are fairly large banquets and parties. You're prepared to handle those and keep them here?
Yes, sir, we're actually, we're actually working with the concessionaire to continue to book events for us. So that was part of the meeting that we had today and we should be at terms with her within the next week.
All right, unless there's any other questions, this was just a presentation, so-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
We've already dealt with agenda item number fourteen, so we'll move on to agenda item number fifteen, which is our presentation of requests to approve amendment number four to the General Services Provider Standard Agreement with Astrom Utility Services to exercise the option to extend agreement for one additional year through June thirty, two thousand and twelve.
I have a question. This came up last time this was on the agenda, and my problem last time was, is why are we extending contracts over and over for years at a time without going out for RFP?
Is that just a general question or about this one in specifically?
This one in particular.
The contract provider has expertise and has a knowledge of the city. My goal actually will be to bring this level of expertise in-house. I'd like to see a city staff member gain this knowledge or hire a city staff member who is one hundred percent loyal to the City of Victorville, not saying that anyone, any contractor is not. But I think one of our difficulties in the past has always been that our contract service providers and utilities, we've been one hundred percent dependent on them. And I would like to break that dependence at some point and have someone here who's paid by Victorville, who is a city employee loyal only to Victorville, not answering to any other supervisors. And so that's the goal. I think for the time being, our best move is to- And so that's the goal. I think for the time being, our best move is to move forward, continuing with this contract until we can bring that expertise in-house, but I would not be interested in, in doing an MOU unless the council directs it to, to look for someone else. Someone else I would want would be actually a city employee.
Just an add-on to that, too. A couple of years ago, it's been, I guess, I went back to a couple of the companies back east in St. Louis. I forget the name of the company at the moment. And I was looking through how that individual did the purchasing. It's an incredibly complex, it's not that we can't do it in-house. In fact, I think very well we could do it in-house. But it's something that you have to grow into. You have to depend on that contracting out for a few years here until you get into that position where you understand the marketplace and the risks that are inherent in that. So what we're doing now is that transitioning process through that and this company here has served us well in that way, that respect.
I don't disagree that he hasn't done a great job. My, my point is, is that we're, we're a public agency. We're a city. We should be equal opportunity. And we should be putting the bids out there to see if he is the best price or if there's anyone that has the, the same qualifications or experience. I just think that, you know, it, it appears to the public that we're constantly just giving it to our buddies and never opening it up for the public. I mean, there's a lot of hungry people out there. We could be getting a better price. That's all I'm saying.
The motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
Agenda Item Number Sixteen is a presentation of request to authorize an additional total appropriation of sixty thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars for the operation of West Winds Sports Center for two months and the West Winds Activity Center for the full year. Total projected revenue is forty-eight thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars.
By the way, as I promised, I met with that committee out there and they are working on all kinds of ways of, of not only the volunteerism part of it, but generating some fees and, and things to bring up the difference between those two numbers so that they can cover that spread here. So they're working on it very diligently out there at S E L A to, to keep that recreational component, because they've, they've got their personal vested, just like the swimming pool people have. Their swimmers and everything else that will out there. That group has got a focused interest there. I went out to that meeting and they're getting quite a bit of interest, like to participate, pay some fees for their memberships and other things. So they're doing a good job. They're getting started.
Doug, there was some concern about insurance issues, liability issues on that. Can you bring us up to speed on that?
There was. As we transitioned to more of a volunteer-based system, the question is, who holds the risk if someone should get injured there? And actually Chuck Bouquet, our risk manager, was able to get a policy that cost us only a hundred dollars per, I believe it's per month, or maybe per event, large event. But it's a tremendous rate in order to be able to provide us with, with that risk mitigation that we need if we're gonna continue to operate these facilities.
This is a pretty good model for the, for the pool.
It absolutely is. In fact, it was so successful with the Activity Center that they found a way to keep it open the entire year through two of the leagues for some kind of sports that I don't fully understand that have odd names. But they, they both expanded their league, doubled the size of their season to the point that it now completely pays for the facility and we're able to keep it open. We're still working with, and in fact, Community Services is meeting weekly with the group for the Sports Center that has the rockerball courts and gym to try to come to a resolution that would allow us to keep that facility open as well. But this will be used as a model for any other facilities, recreational facilities, that are potentially up for closure if we don't have the funds to keep them open.
The motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number Seventeen is a presentation of request to approve the project baseline agreement for the I-15 La Mesa-Nesqually interchange by and between the California Transportation Commission, California Department of Transportation, which is Caltrans, the city of Victorville, and the San Bernardino County Associated Governments.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Pro Tim Cabrealis. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
Agenda Item Number Eighteen is a presentation of request to approve twelve million nine hundred and seventy-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars San Bernardino County Fire Protection District and adopt the proposal for contract number oh-eight dash six-eight-seven A dash two.
Mr. Mayor, I need to bring to your attention, there is actually a typo, if you want to call it that, on this, within the recommendation. The dollar amount listed there is actually last year's dollar amount. I believe staff, when they were putting this together, were focused on the actual fiscal impact dollars, which is the twelve million nine hundred and twenty-four thousand three hundred dollars. That would be the actual recommendation before the council this evening. Apologize for that error.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabrealis, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number Nineteen is a presentation of request to approve the annual purchase order in the amount not to exceed one hundred and fourteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars with Charles Joseph and Associates for citywide risk management services, safety consultant services, and insurance program management services.
I have a, an issue with this item. We have, I guess it's Chuck Bouquet?
Correct.
How many years has he worked here? Or has he been doing this contract?
I believe Chuck's been with the city sixteen years or so.
Okay, and have we ever brought this out for RFP in sixteen years?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. This is exactly what I'm talking about. Now, I did some research on this and I handle the risk management at V V W R A, so I'm very familiar with what he does. And let me tell you, it's not a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars worth. When you get a claim, you send it on to the insurance company. They have PERMA insurance. It's a pooled insurance, meaning that, you know, all the cities get together and it's like self-funded and if they do well on their claims, in other words, if they don't get a lot of claims, they could get the money back, or a portion of that money back. But built into your premiums is an administrative overhead cost, meaning that they have full staff that do claims management, that handle everything. All you do in a city is just forward those claims on. Now, the city of Asparia does it in-house, V V W R A does it in-house, Apple Valley does it in-house. I really don't know of too many cities that do it, or that are, were paying two people to do the same job. And it just doesn't make any sense. And here we need pools and rec and, and, you know, police and, and all of this, but yet this guy has been getting, you know, close to fifteen thousand for sixteen years when we're already paying for that in our premiums. And I spoke to the general manager for PERMA Insurance Company and I asked him, I said, is, is there something, do you have the staff to handle the claims management? And he says, yes. I said, so basically, we're paying for, for two people to do what you already do that we pay you to do. And he says, we have everything here for you to do. So I called the Human Resource Department and find out that there's two people being laid off. One's handling safety, but you're claiming that he's doing the safety. And then the other person is, is H R and is being laid off. And I'm thinking, why is it, and I thought we had a policy for layoffs, saying that, you know, if we're laying people off that we're not gonna contract out to hire, you know, people when we could do it in-house. And so, help me to understand, what am I missing here?
A couple of things. First off, Chuck Bouquet allows us to be, he is a certified self-administrator for PERMA. He is on the PERMA board. And because of that, he handles our claims, all of our claims, even those that would not go to insurance. Having Chuck on staff allows us to have that control over how much we pay rather than submitting it to an insurance company who knows, and I'm not saying PERMA does this. I actually don't know if they do this. But it's in PERMA's interest to keep the claim, any claim below fifty thousand dollars, below our self-insurance retention amount. So they don't feel any pain from a claim until it hits fifty thousand dollars, whereas the city would feel all of that pain up until that point. Chuck allows us to, to have some control over that. Because of that, we actually have a favorable X mod, which you, doing risk management and being involved in pools, I'm sure you know, that's the experience modification factor. In our general liability, it's, we pay basically eighty-one percent of what someone else in a similar, similarly in the pool would pay. For, for our other insurance pools that we belong to with PERMA, through PERMA and Irma, that, one of them actually is as low as almost fifty percent, meaning that for the insurance that we would normally buy, we actually pay about fifty percent of that cost. That's a huge discount for us that we would not receive, in my opinion, if we did not have Chuck on staff. Because of that, we have had those premiums returned, as, returned as you talked about. And I don't remember a year where we had a time when there wasn't more premiums returned than the amount of Chuck's contract. In fact, I spoke with Mr. Ellerbrock today myself and left him a message. He sent me information on how much has been returned and that amount is two point two million dollars since ninety-six, ninety-seven. That's been returned to the city premiums we paid for those insurance services. Chuck also handles all of our other insurance for the city, not health insurance, but just insurance in general. So it's more than just the claims management. He also does, handles specialized safety consulting. There was a concern of some employees in one of our facilities about a potential odor issue and we, our safety consultant came in to do the proper testing in order to make sure that, that our buildings are safe and in fact, they were. He also does management of, of all of our defense cases, working directly with those attorney to keep those costs down. I can't quantify those, but they are certainly lower because of his work. And then, in, I think it was oh-seven, oh-eight, because of issues that we had with our contracts that he was having to deal with on the back end, we actually increased his hours in order to take on contract management, contract administration for the city so that he can prevent claims and prevent incidents of, of having to go to lawsuit on the front end of a contract rather than on the back end. So those are, a lot of the things that Chuck does that PERMA would not do and PERMA would not get involved with.
And I, I, I agree with everything that you said. However, your staff, not only are we paying the insurance company premiums that they have the staff to do it, but you're also paying an H R department and now we're paying Chuck and you've been paying for sixteen years. You didn't address why it doesn't go out for RFP in all those years. And another thing that kind of bothers me about the whole thing, Chuck Bouquet is a councilman for City of Fontana, is that correct?
Franchi Cucumanga.
Franchi Cucumanga. You know, the, the whole thing just reeks of good old boy and we're laying people off and the cities all around us are doing it in-house. Everything that you said, you can do in-house. And, and I think that, you know, if we're paying staff here, let's utilize them. That's my point.
Doug, did I understand correctly, we pay Chuck about a hundred and fifteen thousand a year. Sixteen years. That's what, a million and a half, million and six, million and seven, something like that?
Actually, that, that amount has gone up recently because of the addition of that contract's management portion of his, of his contract as well as some additional safety consulting that he's done on our behalf.
And he's, he's produced two and a half million in premium refunds?
I would not say that Chuck has done that, but the work that Chuck has done through good risk management practices, working with city employees, we have done that together. But he is, is by far the key reason why we have that, yes.
And I've taken a look at, at his invoices and, and it has the date and, and his company and there's no description of work. And that disturbs me that the city just keeps paying him, paying him. And, and we don't really know exactly what cases he's working on, where, where that money is going. And that's just another thing that, that I found suspicious about the whole thing, but I'm ready to vote.
And that actually wasn't just you. That was the San Bernardino County Grand Jury asked me that question. And I responded to them three or four times that Mr. Bouquet doesn't, he does a little bit of work from his office, but generally, he does his work from City Hall. He comes in and Marcy, who happens to be on the other end of the dais, gives him a stack of folders that is his work for the day, that is probably a foot high. And by the end of the day, he has worked through that, those, those folders. My comment to them was that I'm confident in the work that he's doing because I see it. But I did understand that someone looking back at the bills for past history reasons, like they were doing, there was not very much detail, in fact, almost no detail on those bills. So we actually made that change in, I think it was February or maybe March of this year. And he is now indicating, just for recordation purposes, the cases that he's working on while he's here in City Hall. I appreciate your comments and we have already corrected that.
The motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
Agenda Item Number Twenty is a presentation of request to approve a hundred and thirty thousand five hundred and nine dollars to Public Entity Risk Management Authority, PERMA, to create a purchase order for Irma liability insurance for employees.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabrealis, second by Councilmember Rothschild.
Eighty-two thousand dollars under budget.
Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number Twenty-One is a presentation of request to approve four hundred and sixty-five thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars to Public Entity Risk Management Authority, PERMA, to create a purchase order for general liability insurance.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Pro Tim Cabrealis.
Thirty-seven thousand dollars under budget.
Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number Twenty-Two is a presentation of request to approve an amount not to exceed two hundred and twenty-seven thousand six hundred and eleven dollars to Alliant Insurance Services for the Public Entity Property Insurance Program.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabrealis, second by Councilmember Rothschild.
Thirteen thousand dollars under budget.
Councilmember Rothschild, may I get your vote on this?
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number Twenty-Three is a presentation of request to approve thirty-three thousand two hundred and forty dollars to Joe Gonzalez and Son for providing professional legislative representation.
I have a question. On the staff record, it, it doesn't say, it says this item is necessary for city councils to provide professional legislative representation in Sacramento for fiscal year eleven, twelve. This item was included in the budget. It doesn't say what, what it is. What is this?
This is for lobbyist services for us in Sacramento.
What are they lobbying for?
In the past, they lobbied on our behalf to successfully defeat, two bills actually that I'm aware of. When the High Desert Power Project was being developed, there was a move in the legislature to not allow the property taxes that they would pay to come to the city of Victorville and be included in our, our tax increment. And they worked with city staff to get those defeated. I do recall when I was an analyst for the city, that I worked directly with them on, there was an attempt at a sales tax, property tax swap that would have taken a base year and then swapped out the same dollars in sales tax and property tax. Well, if you've seen the way sales tax was growing at that point versus the way property tax grows historically, the analysis that I did was that over a five-year period, it would actually would have cost the city of Victorville fifteen million dollars if that property tax swap would have been approved. And they worked with the legislature to, to, to get that defeated. They've worked collectively with the League of Cities in order to get other similar bills defeated. They also do keep us apprised of, of anything that's going on in the Capitol. We tend to hear about it a day or two ahead of time because they are so well, well-connected and well-liked. Right now, they're working with us on the Ten Tanker Contract, trying to, to get the state to renew that, that contract with the Ten Tankers so that they can in fact afford to rent the hangar and that they can continue to provide those fire services. Their specialty lies more in the Capitol Building than in the bureaucratic nature of, of the government, but unfortunately, we have not had the funds to, to travel the last couple of years for, for especially new council members to be able to meet them and, and hear from legislators, and not just the ones that represent us, but to hear from other legislators as to how well-respected this firm is.
Okay, so, so what we're paying for today, is that good for the whole year?
Yes, that's, that's the whole year.
And that's for any issues that we have coming up?
Absolutely, anything. Absolutely anything. If it involves the state government, they will be there for us, they have in the past.
And they're not going to bill us separately more for a special issue?
No, not at all, not at all.
I get it.
I would love for us to be able to go up there and meet them. They have an annual dinner that, according to legislators that are there, is the best-attended dinner all year long, because they have both sides of the, they have Democrats there, they have Republicans there, and they are very, very well-liked. They can walk into any office in the Capitol and have rapport there.
Have like a contract for them? That states this?
Let me, well, not that it states that, no, but let me find out, research our historic documents to find out if we have a written contract for this, or how this has been handled. I'm not sure.
How long have they been our representatives?
That I don't know. I've been here for nine years, and they've been here at least that long. So let me find out what that is. This last series of items is a little bit different than what this council has experienced. I've taken a little bit of a different tack with these large annual purchase orders. Many of these contracts are contracts, not this one per se, but many of them are ongoing contracts that are approved every year, they're part of the budget, and have simply just been paid on an annual basis. Because our purchasing code limits my purchase authority to $25,000, I'm not comfortable, even though it's an annual contract, simply signing it. So I've asked staff to bring all these contracts to the council, so that the council and the public are aware of the contracts that we enter into and their annual costs. So that's why a lot of these things are on the agenda that normally you would not have seen.
Okay, but just so that we're clear, is, there's just the one page, there's no contract, so I'm not comfortable approving something that I don't know everything about?
Understood. And this isn't actually for the contract itself, it's for the, to put in place the purchase order in order to allow staff to pay them on a monthly basis. But I will definitely get the entire council a copy of any contract documents that we have.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
Agenda Item Number 24 is discussion and possible action regarding items for the upcoming city council agenda. I'll start with Councilwoman Vias.
I'm going to kind of combine 24 and 25, because I'm not sure where you want to place it. But I have issues, and I brought it up before, where the mayor is writing letters, and he did today again, to the cities regarding VITA. I don't necessarily agree with what he's saying in the letter, but it appears that I am, because I'm CC'd at the bottom, and he's using City Letterhead. So I guess I need the council to decide whether this is acceptable to work outside of the board. If it is, then I'll start writing letters of my own. And I just find it odd that, you know, I get censored at every turn, but yet, you know, there's letters being written constantly without my approval, or even knowledge. Mayor, where would you like that? Agendized?
Sure. Fine with that. Is everyone else fine with that?
Okay.
All right, so we have a majority that will agendize that.
And Mr. Kennedy asked for a finance update, and I thought it was going to be in this meeting, was it going to be another one, or?
Yeah, we're still preparing that.
Okay.
And want to make sure that all the council members are going to be here when we present it, so it may not be at the next meeting, because we may not have all five of you here. So it's not quite ready, but it's getting close. We couldn't get it on this agenda, but it's definitely coming up soon.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Mike?
Yes, whatever, are we on 24 or 25?
Uh, 24.
All right, I have no, nothing for 24.
All right, then 25?
Oh, 25, okay. I'd like to go down and again, reiterate, it never fails to, amazed me that so many people have short memories of all the things that we've gone through out at former George Air Force Base, SCLA. In my opinion, and we do have the largest, geographically the largest redevelopment agency in the state of California, we have, in my opinion, also one of the most successful ones in the entire country. When you look at the timeframe that we've worked in, starting about '92-'94, after all the litigation settled out with Atlano, what we've put into place there, let me read through this. At the airport out there, you have Leading Edge, you have the air reconnaissance wing, you have General Electric, Pacific Aerospace Research Technology, Pratt &amp; Whitney, Southern California Aviation, those are all the onsite ones, the offsite ones all associated directly with the properties right next to the airport, but the closure of the base, Dr. Pepper Snapple, Newell Rubber, Plastic Company, XL Scientific, M&amp;M Mars has moved out there into that million-square-foot building, Red Bull, Sparklet Waters, and Pacific Aviation Group, all of those employ people, and that employment base is growing. We also, and that's not to mention also, that one of our first successes out there was the getting of the federal prison, which has at the moment approximately 800 employees, a very nice silent partner out there with a great employment base. The success at SCLA has been incredible. This past council that has managed through all of these deals and these opportunities in spite of California, not because of California. California is the worst state in the union to do business in. I've read that time and time again, Wall Street Journal notwithstanding. And so, for us to have any kind of success in California, I'm amazed that the Dr. Pepper plan is here in the first place. And we've got more successes coming. The platform out there is an incredible opportunity for, not only for the city of Victorville, which manages the airport, but for the entire 400,000 people in the Victor Valley. Every time a company plops down out there, they don't have to be in one of the other cities for all of the cities to benefit from these employees that are out there. Three to 4,000 people on that base, and we're going to have 10,000 people out there over the next decade. And with the Desert Express coming from Las Vegas, the opportunities are just phenomenal. So again, I am very proud of what has happened out there at SCLA, and I do believe this has been one of the most successful redevelopment agencies of any closed base in the United States, bar none.
All right, the only thing I'd like to say is, I look forward to the opportunity. I would like the council to give direction to those of us that sit on JPAs as to what our authority is and what we should be doing. I think it's proven that the council have a discussion in that manner, and give direction to those of us that have been appointed to those various JPAs, because I can assure you, being the mayor is not just about shaking hands and kissing babies. So with that, I am adjourned.